I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three Firehouse Building Committee Meeting in the Harvey Hearing Room. A roll call. Myself, Scott Wiley, Council President Lattieri, Karen Chavis,
Here.
Paul Flanagan.
Here.
Jill Dorr.
Here.
Kim Dimes.
Here.
Larry Powers.
Here.
Chris Boyce. Tom Giudina. Josh Castellano. Frank Constantino. Jonathan DiMauro.
Here.
Town Manager Marino.
Here.
Anna Belcher.
Yeah.
Charles Flanagan.
Here.
And Honorary Member Dick Banks. If you could please stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go into the public hearing, I just want to give a couple of updates. Do we want to do the photos?
Sure.
So we have a couple of photos, renditions from Castle Booze, the architect, in response to some comments that were made about the previous renditions and drawings. For the Phase Two, which would be the police station addition renovation connection to the fire station for the creation of the public safety building.
And what they did basically is they took the comments and they tried to match the second floor with the architecture from the first floor in terms of not just squared off as it was previously. And I think there's one more picture of just a, yeah, just a more linear look at Phase One and Two together. And again, this is very early on, but just to give people an idea that we continue to try to work on suggestions that we're getting from the public and try to incorporate them into how eventually a total facility might look.
Council President, can I ask, I thought they were talking about Wardsworth.
It will be. That isn't involved in this. No, no, no.
No.
That, you know, we'd like to use stones from the Wardsworth Building and some of the architecture around the windows of the Wardsworth Building, especially the archway and the, and if you look here, what they did do kind of is they did change arches on that to match. So little by little, but there will be pieces, as we did with the ATC, there will be pieces of the previous building in the new building.
Is that a keystone over in the building?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the other update is the town manager continues to work with tenants in the Wardsworth for potential relocation if this ballot on initiative passes. And to that end, Council President Lattieri has a letter from the Meat Market.
We have a letter from today from Patsy Insandro, which they've given us permission to read here, and I'm sure they're going to be putting it on social media. And I'll just read it verbatim. It says, "Update: To our loyal friends and community, thank you for your ongoing support these past few months as we learn more about the future of our family business. We are happy to share with you that we have been actively working in good faith with the town to come to a resolution together. We are confident that we can make a plan to stay in Winthrop so we can continue to serve our loyal customers and partner with the town at community events. The Meat Market continues to support our local Winthrop firefighters and their pursuit of a new fire station in any way we can. Again, thank you to the town for their continued and open dialogue and to our customers for your ongoing support. Patsy Insandro." So can't go into more detail at this time, but, you know, I thank the town manager for his work and Patsy Insandro for their continued efforts, and you'll hear more about this in short order.
Okay. With that, yes, ma'am.
Just one thing before we get started. I had the opportunity to talk to Dick Bangs about two weeks ago after one of my meetings, and he's very excited about this project. He does tune in and watch because of his, some of his restricted mobility, he isn't always able to get out, but he had planned on coming to the meeting last Monday, and of course, we canceled that because really it was not a reason to have a meeting. He was gonna come tonight, but his daughter made him a dinner, which he loves, and she said, "Well, Dad, you know, your meetings are on Monday." He said, "Well, this week, it's on Tuesday." But he is gonna plan on being here next Monday night, which I'm glad that he's gonna make the attempt to be here. But he is very excited, and he was very pleased. I guess the town manager went over and sat with him for a while on his back deck, and they had long conversations, and he's really looking forward, and he's looking forward to coming. And I know he's watching, so, hi, Dick.
Okay. With that, we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to be heard, please state your name and precinct or name and address for the record, and this is our opportunity to hear from you. Yes, ma'am.
Judy Bonner, Winthrop Historic Mission. Could we go back to the picture, please? Is that possible?
Sure.
That's definitely not the picture.
That's not the one you'd like to see, but it is.
She did look good. I appreciate the fact that the rendering has been changed, obviously. I have a couple of questions. Of course, we do need to point out that we do not live in the pasture, so that is not, you know, accurate as far as the front that we're looking at.
I think you should go to the other picture. Go to the other picture.
On top of the police station, I like the way that they've curved that around, which is much more, you know, appropriate. There's still a tremendous amount of glass. What concerns me about that is that, is the intention down the line to keep that amount of glass? Is that, is there a reason for that amount of glass besides lighting? Is that what you were looking, going for the look?
No, I think what they're looking at is less intrusive, right? Instead of just a wall of brick, they're trying to make it less intrusive. Again, this is infancy stages. Similar, I mean, we're close with the firehouse, but
Yeah.
Once, hopefully this is passed, we will go through this all again with public input, public hearings, to try to get a better rendition of what we can agree that it should look like. Like somebody just mentioned about pieces from the Wardsworth Building, which isn't incorporated into this yet. So that's still going to be a work in progress, even for the firehouse, and this is a little bit down the road from that. But, yeah, the chief and I were just talking before the meeting about the amount of glass that it shows in this rendering. And again, I think they're trying to look at something less intrusive.
Not that we have anybody that would throw rocks, but that's almost an invitation to, let's go by and, you know, have a few rocks flying as cars go by, et cetera, et cetera. And this maintenance issue with replacing glass. And I like the way that they did incorporate the new look on the fire station part, you know, the, if we could do something similar to that, you know, with the fire station up top or something similar, because that would blend in much better.
And I think also, if you take a look at the second that Hannah was bringing up, they also, you know, show how the equipment would be outside the building and still on the apron, along with the archways there, but again, still, yeah.
And we could feed it that around. My next question would be, how did the fire engines get into, I guess, the building? Do they still have to back in?
Yeah, they back in.
Okay.
Judy, what you have to remember, too, is that this is
Just the rendering.
Exactly. And once this passes and the OPM is hired and then we get an architect, then there'll be a lot of input from everybody.
But that's much better than it was before.
Anybody else like to be heard? Sir?
Hook and Wire Precinct Two. I've had the blessings of having phenomenal, a phenomenal fire department here in town years ago when
My place had a fire.
And I am forgiven forever. I will thank our fire department for being as amazing as they are, and I truly deserve, believe that they deserve to have a fire station along with the police department in Phase Two. They have a building. They deserve it and have all the latest equipment, everything they deserve. I can't say enough. The only concern I have, long-term thinking with almost every municipal building we have plus hearing, what's happened with our fire stations is the maintaining of something like this. The initial cost to build it, I understand it's needed, but just like any property we have here in town, we do not truly have a fully effective need for this. And that's what I'd love to see once, if it gets put through, a really detailed how we're gonna maintain this. Hearing, I believe, the boilers went in some of the fire stations and kind of scrambled to try and get money to try and get those done. That money should be planned for. I mean, boilers have to be maintained on a regular basis. Those are aspects that I think about when I'm thinking of new buildings, and I know even our schools sometimes have that same situation where they're, you know, I understand there's maintenance programs getting put in place, but that should be in place before we really roll out a new building. I mean, it should be part of the project. So that's a big concern for me, because you deserve to have it.
Agreed. Now, just on the boiler issue, one of the reasons that we go through the boilers as often as we do is because of the conditions in the station. It's, well, they run constantly because of the inefficiency of the buildings, but it's an extremely inefficient wet return steam system that was designed a hundred years ago, and it's wet, constantly wet down the basement, and they actually rot from the inside out. And instead of getting thirty years out of one, we're replacing one right now that's ten years old. And that's an ongoing issue and has been.
But we absolutely, a hundred percent, agree with your sentiment, and we talked about this even with the CBD project that was just completed not too long ago, right? And we were told it's a fourteen million dollar project, but to maintain it, it's rarely a forty thousand dollar a year cost, and we have to continue to sail the rocks and do all the stuff that we need to do, just as we do with the schools. And it was a learning process even at the beginning with a couple of the schools, and now we seem to have things much better under control. And with the town manager and the work he's doing, getting a full accounting of all the municipal buildings in town, I think we're gonna be much better off. But that usually in budgets in the past, that's the first thing to go, right? Let's cut maintenance, because nobody wants to cut employees. It's, let's cut maintenance, and just can't do that because it comes back. It might not come back in year one or two, but, you know, it's already been twenty years almost since the ATC and twenty-three years for the Gorman. So they come quick. Miller Field was another one, we were told when it was built. It's gonna cost eight hundred thousand to replace that turf, and the turf lasts about seven to eight years. We're in year seven now. Now, didn't get as much use because of COVID, but still, we're going to be coming to that point now, and we have to be prepared for it.
Yeah, it's much more preventive maintenance and planned maintenance. It's a lot less expensive than emergency repairs.
Yeah.
So, and that's sometimes what we fall into.
Thank you. Sir?
Hook and Wire Precinct Two. One of the things that is of interest to me is opportunities to plant, I think, we call them silver maples, the trees that we don't wanna have on the streets because they grow completely wild, they're huge and look sidewalks, but they create a nice grand appearance. Would there be any opportunity to plant some on those locations where they'd have the opportunity to reach their full potential and, you know, give the area some shade and, you know, make it look a little bit more like a picturesque Norman Rockwell photo?
Yeah, I think we'll definitely, as the process continues, we'll work with an arborist as well as a landscape, but to make sure we have plants that are, and trees that are right for that neighborhood and for the sunlight and everything else, to make sure the way they grow that they're not gonna be too intrusive. So, yes, it will absolutely be part of the project.
Part of the design team that we've been working with so far is a landscape architect with Castle Booze. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Kathleen Puccio, Precinct Two as well. Just following up on what Kurt said, and this might be a really easy answer, I probably should have asked my sister about it, because she probably would know the answer to this question, but I agree with Kurt with regard to, you know, preventative maintenance. Is there a possibility as part of the debt exclusion that the monies would not be, the monies would be used to build, of course, the proper, you know, the structures, but also to have maybe a ten percent escrow or something for maintenance? And again, that might be a very easy no, I'm not a financial person, but I was just thinking when Kurt was mentioning it, is there something that is a possibility like that when we do a debt exclusion to set aside some funds?
No. But, you know, there is contingencies in the plan for, you know, unforeseen things, but not for maintenance. You know, it has to be something that's gonna have the useful life of the life of the project, which wouldn't be maintenance.
Okay.
But it's something we could do as a town to set up either an enterprise sort of fund for maintenance or look into other things, like we've been talking about the CBA.
CPA.
CPA, Community Preservation Act, which we hope to bring forward very soon on the council, which is something that gives us the opportunity to save funds through a portion of taxes and put into a place where we can use it for, you know, municipal buildings, recreational areas, green space and such. So that would be a good opportunity to have something.
Yeah, I really think that would be a great idea, because I think as Council President, you just mentioned a little bit ago, is, you know, when, you know, we're always seem to be not in a spending, the town not usually in a spending, doesn't have a spending problem, so to say, you know, we've got the revenue issue. And I guess, you know, part of the thing, not really a huge concern, but something I'm thinking about is, you know, our fire chief and, you know, having to continuously come back to the town and say, hey, we've got this maintenance issue, and if we don't address this, then we might have a really big problem. But then, if you're looking at, let's say, the schools, and we might lose a teacher or something, you know, it comes down to that, if someone's looking at, you know, let's say, a taxpayer, you're looking at, you know, saving someone's job versus a boiler, most people are gonna say, oh, we need to save that job, you know? And I think if we can, because again, I've said this before, you know, sometimes the town can be very reactive opposed to proactive. You know, and I think it would be just a great thing, if, again, if possible, like you said, to do, you know, enterprise fund or something, where instead of, you know, our fire department, you know, in Phase Two, our police department coming back and sometimes having to beg, frankly, for money that they need to, you know, to really work and to service the community, it would just be so much better to not have it as, you know, a teacher's job or a fireman's job versus the boiler. You know, so if we can be proactive with that, you know, with, you know, our town manager, Tony is, you know, like a lot of us have said, Tony's done such a phenomenal job in this town since he's been here, and I truly applaud him for everything he's done, you know, with the CBD, with this project. Tony has proven to be a really huge asset to this community. You know, so for Tony and the CFO, maybe to look into, you know, with, of course, the town council, if we could look into, if this, you know, passes, to have that type of enterprise fund set aside, so, you know, you get away with, you have to not deal with some of the minutia, quite frankly, of having to come and beg for money when someone's gonna say something else is more important. So I just think that would be great, you know, like you said, Council President, if that could be looked into.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir?
Joel Greenfield, Prison Park. I wanna compliment you all, because I'm sure you put a lot of time and effort into this, and I guess I wanna compliment the people that are here, because there have only been the two meetings, and the last one, I think, there were seven people. I expected the line would be out the door, so, you know, shame on the town for not supporting it more. I can't believe everybody's home watching it on TV. I made the mistake the other night of telling a group of people I was with from the town that I was coming here, so I have a, I guess, a collaboration. Some are mine, some are not mine, but if you'll bear with me, I have a list, sort of a punch list. So, first of all, how much, and these might have been answered before, I don't know, how much does the town receive in revenue from the Kirby and Wardsworth Buildings?
The town receives in tax revenue from the Kirby and Wardsworth Buildings. The Wardsworth Building is technically two lots, but together, it's about, within a couple hundred bucks, about seventeen thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. Kirby's, again, within a couple hundred bucks, brings in a little under eleven thousand, so together, they bring in a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars in tax revenue, real estate taxes.
And there's no revenue derived from any of the businesses?
No. The Meat Market, for example, we put into, we have like a city meals tax type thing. It's an additional three-quarters of a point, or a point and a quarter. So that brings in totality for the town over the course of a year from all the businesses, a couple hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars. So they would have, you know, a portion of that, so maybe twenty-five or thirty, but again, the goal has always been that they're gonna continue, and that will hopefully even grow. But yes, that's it for that, and their revenue goes to the landlord, right, for rent, so they're not paying real estate taxes.
And how much does it cost the town to acquire these properties?
That's part of the cost of the project. It's upwards of almost six million dollars.
For the two pieces of property?
For the two pieces of property.
And how much to relocate the existing businesses?
And that's also part of the project. It's not only our moral obligation, but it's our legal obligation, and the cost will depend on the, you know, obviously, it's more intrusive to relocate the Meat Market than it is one of the smaller businesses upstairs that just has an office and a desk, right? So we have been working with relocation. We've talked about relocation cost, and again, it's accounted for in the budget and potentially as part of the acquisition fees.
So it's included?
Yes, it's not. It's not a new number that's going to add money to the project.
And then, what kind of revenue do you anticipate from the sale of the two fire stations and possibly a police station if this bill doesn't go through?
If this bill doesn't go through, a police station?
You have to pick another spot if the fire station, if this location gets voted down by the town.
Yeah, I don't know if we would be picking another spot right away, but I think if you're, to answer your first question, on the cost, I mean, it's market-driven, right? The Shirley Street Station, I would be guessing, I don't know, a couple million dollars, I don't know.
Hasn't been done on that?
On the cost of what we would be getting, it changes month to month on the cost of real estate and everything else. But no, it hasn't been done. It's a totally separate thing. If this, when, hopefully this passes in November, we would immediately set up a reuse committee to look at the two fire stations, right? Because there might be different thoughts that people might have. The Shirley Street Station seems a little more cut and dry, the Pauline Street Station is much different. People are, you know, very much attached to that building and the architecture of it, so I think whatever's done, we'd wanna maintain the structure of the building and the look of the building. And that would be a committee similar to what we did over a dozen years ago when the schools brought back the E.B. Newton to the town. We had a reuse committee and thought about how we were gonna handle that building, and similar thing would be happening. It would be, you know, too early for us now to assume that we would need that committee, so we have not set that committee up, but it would be set up right away.
So within the budget you're talking about, I don't know when this budget was formulated, that you came up with a number, but things have changed quite dramatically in the past few months. So does that take into consideration the cost of money, the increases of labor and supplies, and probably the cost of building some kind of retaining behind these buildings because it goes downhill?
Yeah, it does take into account all of, you know, future cost of money, that if it didn't get passed this year, they're telling us it's about eight to ten percent a year, right? So when they proposed this and did all the financing, which includes, you know, contingencies, this was set a price effective as of the spring or summer of two thousand and twenty-four. So if you look, when they, Kessel and Boos made two presentations back in nineteen and twenty, and when they did the second presentation, it was the exact same thing as the first, it just was up a million and a half dollars because of the time. So this is not accounting for it being done in October of two thousand and twenty-three, this is to begin in the summer, spring, summer of two thousand and twenty-four. So that's what that price is for.
Somewhere, I guess it was a couple of meetings ago, somebody asked about the middle school advantage, disadvantage, advantage of putting it there, and your comment was that it would cost more to put it there because they would have to dig a foundation to put the shooting range in the basement and the advantages of the shooting ranges in the basement of the existing police station.
That's one of the items I did discuss about, yes. You would want a shooting, a shooting range, which we're fortunate enough to have a smaller range, which in this drawing here, it does enlarge that a little bit, but
So the question was, is there an ordinance that it has to be in the basement? Why couldn't it be above ground?
I don't think I, as Council President, would want a shooting range on the first floor.
That wouldn't work?
I don't think the neighbors would want that either.
My question's up to spell down.
No, 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 I think that
Thirty years, I think they had a shooting range. You brought it up.
Well, my point is, is because you don't hear it. So if you're gonna put it above the ground, you're gonna spend a lot of money to soundproof it.
And change the architecture, too. And have all glass with the
What you want on prime real estate on the first
But not a bad question. Not a bad question.
In the paper, it said that the fire station and the police station, I think they're approximately the same, about thirty-three or thirty-five thousand square feet each?
No. Don't believe everything you read in the paper. But no, that total lot, the Wardsworth Building, Kirby's Funeral Home, and the police station is roughly fifty-one thousand square feet, combined, the three of them. I believe this proposed Phase One is thirty-four thousand?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand square feet. And the existing stations now, I wanna say
Six and eight.
Six and eight.
I think in last week's transcript, it said something about the police station would be about thirty-three thousand square feet.
No, that wouldn't be, yeah. And again, it could be, and, but I don't even think it is, when you're adding stories, when they're talking about square footage, like somebody will ask the square footage of the middle school, and somebody will say, oh, it's seventy-five thousand square feet, but it actually sits on a twenty-five thousand square foot footprint, and it just goes up three stories, so it's twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five.
That's my next question. What is the actual square footage of the middle school?
I just told you. The middle school actually, again, I'm gonna misspeak a little
The middle school, the lot the middle school is on, excluding the rink, is ninety-one thousand square feet.
The middle school itself sits on a twenty-five thousand square foot footprint, but it's three stories, so technically, it's a seventy-five thousand square foot.
Does that include the auditorium in that?
In the, not in the twenty-five thousand, no.
No, no, I mean, in the
In the ninety-two thousand, it's the middle school, it's from the top of Wardsworth all the way down, Waldorf, all the way down to the rink.
Then, again, I wasn't there, but I believe you said that it would cost the town about a million and a half dollars to tear down the middle school?
Yes, that's a pretty accurate quote that we got
And if it was a maybe a sports center, the town would receive approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue?
I'm projecting around two hundred thousand total, because the thought of that project would be to have four townhouses at the top of the street to complete that neighborhood and to give them a natural barrier between any development that went. So, again, if you had four townhouses, it's approximately fifty thousand dollars in tax revenue, maybe forty thousand dollars in tax revenue, and then anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand for rent from the proposed sports complex.
So it'll take like fifteen years to break even?
Well, and again, the cost of demolition, the building, is probably nine hundred, eight hundred to nine hundred thousand, and then the cost of remediation of the asbestos that we failed pretty strongly is in there. So, yeah, the cost of that, if you're just looking at the cost of, I mean, the cost of demolishing these two buildings as part of Phase One of, as part as building the fire station, is six hundred and fifty thousand, which is already included in the project. So it's a cost of the project. Yes, if you wanted to look at it that way, I look at it in a way that we're going to ask a company to come in here and do all the infrastructure work underneath the middle school, which would cost us millions of dollars, and it would increase your water rates. So we're hoping that they're gonna do that for us as part of the project. So, you know, there's give and take on both sides with that, and the stimulus that it would prevent, that it would bring in from businesses and
So the same thing, you know, you guys were up the sports center. Again, not all my questions. If it were a sports center for the owner or the developer to get some kind of cash flow, he would have to have an awful strong revenue stream coming into the town. Because from what you said was certain portions would be allocated for the residents of the town, and the rest, I guess, would be outsourced. I don't know about all you people, but at three o'clock in the afternoon, the traffic backs up from Belle Isle Seafood all the way to Orient Heights. So more people, more congestion, how could the town possibly handle what would be needed just to pave the nutter this time?
Okay, and again, this is, and I wanna answer the questions because you've come down and you have a lot of questions. We wanna try to stick to the firehouse, but I'm trying to connect it because you're saying, why wouldn't we build a firehouse there? So it's kind of a connected question, so I just wanna answer the best I can, too. In terms of revenue, when they're giving us times and stuff, we're paying for the times as we do now, if the hockey team, the boys' hockey team, the girls' hockey team goes and practices, the high school pays, the high the high school pays, the high school pays roughly 45,000 in, in ice fees to the rink. And the way they make the predominantly amount of money that they would make on this facility is through tournaments. And when you have in tournaments, it's not a tournament for the most part from people from Saugus and Lynn and Peabody to come to Winthrop. It's a tournament for people from California or Minnesota or Chicago to come into Boston to have a tournament. They'd be staying someplace, they usually take a bus to the rink and they have the tournament. And they're here, you know, at that level, they're, they're coming to a facility to have a tournament, whether it be hockey or basketball, whatever, to get recruited and to come to a, a city, you know, they're not, they're not advertising the tournament as come to Winthrop to see a tournament. It's come to Boston and have B.C. and Harvard and B.U. and Northeastern and, and such come and watch you play, and the coaches come and watch you play, and you try to get recruited. So they're looking at it as a, you know, great opportunity to be the closest thing to the airport and the closest thing to the city of Boston to have, you know, great tournaments at, whether, whatever sport it happens to be.
And so, almost, there's only about six people. How will the question be worded?
We did say the exact wording of the question. I don't have it on me, and I apologize for that. We've already gone to print. We had to have it. The council voted on it at our last meeting, or two meetings ago. We had to have the language in 45 days before the election so we could get the ballots printed. It's very generic. We had to go through lawyers and, and bonds, uh, bond counsel. It's a very generic verbiage. It basically says that, you know, it doesn't say an amount of money, which none of the debt exclusions will. It says to cover the costs associated with building, acquisition costs, demolition costs, equipping, the whole thing, you know. So it's basically very simple. Then under it, we kind of try to, we have the opportunity to have a little verbiage as to, you know, a year's vote would enable us to borrow a 30-year bond to build a firehouse, blah, 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 and a no vote would not allow us to do that. So it kind of gives a little explanation under it. We can get you the exact text, and maybe we could even have it printed on the website because it's public, it's not. Yeah, that would be, yeah, that's a good idea.
Paper on the website?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's going to be in the paper.
Yeah, and it will be in the paper.
That's all the question. Well, actually, one's a footnote of my own. I don't know if the town is aware of it, nor, but Northeastern is looking to vacate their campus in the hot, looking for another space. And I understand that Gloucester is proceeding with a plan for them to maybe move their campus there. Winthrop sort of has a case in the hole. I don't know if anybody has approached Bob about the idea of a middle school location. You have ocean, you have bay, and you have Amash. It might be a great place.
We did approach, and not necessarily Northeastern, I don't think Bob was there at the time, but, you know, when, six or seven years ago, we, we talked to all the schools, we reached out to all the schools to see if anyone was interested in having an annex in Winthrop. We had a building. I mean, there would have to be a lot of work done to that building and such, but...
Right, a lot of developers have committed to develop it if they have a trinket lease. But this is a new situation where I believe it was voted down in the hot, and they are actively looking to relocate their campus.
Thank you.
Which would make a lot more sense for the sports center.
To you. Thank you.
More quick thing in the name here. How often do you have to reach outside of town to get a ladder truck to actually come to a fire for our town?
Every time we have a working fire, we get a ladder truck that comes in, a second ladder truck that comes in.
I'm pretty sure a lot of people in town don't realize that. So I knew my fire that we had to have, I believe, Massport. We get a Massport at my house.
Would have been, probably, well, if it was a ladder truck, it was Chelsea or Revere.
Yeah, okay. Probably misunderstood.
Yep, but Massport sends an engine to all of our working fires. We get automatic aid, automatic mutual aid on working fires and above, and then we hit the running cards and, and they come in as the alarms go up, but...
And to get this station would allow us to get ladder truck?
Well, we have a ladder truck now. We have our own.
So we don't have anybody else to come in now?
No, they, they would still come in, they would still come in. The, the big issue with the apparatus in these, in these stations is out of town apparatus can't fit inside our buildings. So when they come to cover, if we have a working fire in Winthrop, somebody has to come in to cover our other calls. So we're all tied up working at a fire. We still have alarm activations, we still have medical aids, car accidents, whatever the call may be. An out of town company comes in and covers those calls for us. Now, because of the age and the size of the buildings, the restriction in height, they can't store their apparatus in the building, so they park in the street. They have to leave there. So if it's a, they could get in the ladder truck bay, but that's it. Nobody can get any engines into the buildings.
So I think that what I was trying to drive to is that currently, do we have the apparatus we need to put out the height of fires and the locations of fires in our town?
Yes.
With equipment we currently have now?
We do, we do. But when we do value, we're in the process of buying equipment or apparatus, we have to custom order it, and we have to have it made to specifics nine foot four and below. We can't, it's like going to a, a car dealer and saying, I would like to buy that car off the floor, but I can't, I need you to custom build it. So of course, if they're going to custom build you a Toyota Camry, you're going to pay extra money for it. And that's what we have to do. In one case, several years ago, before we did a major renovation at the ladder bay, we had three different manufacturers work on the same ladder truck. One built the chassis, one built the cab, one built the, the aerial. And that was a disaster.
This would solve, solve that issue?
This would solve all the issues we'd be able to, we have ample space and ample height to get any apparatus in the building.
Scott, can I just make one comment?
Of course.
We have mutual aid also. You may see a lot of fire engines that look like they're doing nothing. We only go out usually with eight people. They're there because we need the firefighters, okay? So a lot of times, you might see apparatus parked on a street that's a block away from the fire. It's not because we needed their engine, we needed their manpower. And that's, that's the thing, you know? Boston on the first alarm that Scott's talking about gets 35 guys. We have eight. You watch TV, Chicago Fire, and you think everything's going to happen like that. Not how it happens.
Any other comments? Sir?
Scott Mahoney, Wright Precinct 3. So there's a couple of things that have come to mind as I'm listening to people speak. So the first thing in, in every community, there are two pieces in every community that residents look to address, education and public safety, hands down. We've done very well with education in here. We have three beautiful schools, much nicer than many other communities have, but we are failing on public safety. If you look across Massachusetts right now, there are so many communities that are doing what we're doing. They're looking at rebuilding a police station, starting from scratch, rehabbing, same for the fire department. We're past due on this, and we have to be able to, to make progress here. If this fails on the vote, where does that leave the fire department? It's my assumption, and maybe it's an incorrect assumption, that everyone in this community knows someone who is related to somebody who works for the fire department, who has a friend of a friend. So for me personally, I know a few people who work for the fire department. Very hard for me, even if I don't particularly agree with the proposed location, my expectation is that the job for a firefighter is risky enough as it is. We shouldn't be putting our firefighters at risk when they come back to the station, period. They should be able to eat, sleep, work, function, in a safe and healthy environment. And the bottom line is, there are so many fire departments, the station buildings across Massachusetts that are about 40 years old and older. Many of those buildings have mold infestation, they have asbestos, there's inadequate ventilation, there's like a million issues that are unsafe to the firefighters. We can't wait anymore. And like everything else, I, I pay taxes in this town just like everybody else does. And yeah, my taxes are going to go up if this project goes through, but my conscience tells me I'll, I'll deal with the tax increase if it means that our public safety employees, the fire department, and eventually the police department are working in a safe environment. If we had to build a new school right now because we needed it so that the kids were safe, the faculty were safe, I would vote it, I would support it. Because it's all about, for me, it's about having a conscience and doing the right thing. And I think we're way past due. My husband and I have actually gone to a couple of different fire departments around Massachusetts. We've met with some of the staff, we've talked to the chief here and there. Their buildings, their current buildings are about where we're at. Most of them are from the mid to late 1800s to early 1900s. There's a few that were built in 1940 to 1955, and they're in horrible shape. And their residents have stepped up to the plate to vote, to pass whatever needs to be passed so that they can build a new station or renovate the existing station. So my personal opinion, we're long past due on this. I, I want to see this go forward.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I'd like to piggyback on, first of all, thank you for your comments. Just to piggyback on that a little bit, since I'm retired, I tend to spend a fair amount of time around town talking to people. Sometimes my wife says far too much time talking to people. But the common sentiment I've been getting around town is that everybody, a majority, a, a strong majority agree, yes, we need a new fire station. The fire stations are old. But then there's a segment that does the but afterwards. And that but statement runs the gamut of all the things we've talked about, about site, about businesses, about cost, about you name it. And I've tried to tell them, people have to remember is, back, the town decided back in 1960s that they needed a new fire station. And they needed it for a reason back in the 60s because those stations were already starting to deteriorate. That was 60 years ago. We tried to do it in the 90s, and it, it just didn't happen, those priorities. The schools, the two, the Cummings and the, and the Fort Banks School had to get built. But what people forget is, in those intervening 60 years, those stations continued to deteriorate year after year after year after year. It's like having an old car, you know, versus tires, then its brakes, then it's a starter, then it's a water pump, then, and it finally gets to the point you say to yourself, is it worth putting any more money into this car? It's just, it's not worth it. And in the deterioration of those stations, you're asking people, because I, I worked for the department for 32-plus years. You're asking people to live in buildings that have mold, have asbestos, have substandard wiring, substandard plumbing. The only reason those buildings are anywhere near functional on the second floor level is because of the work done by the firefighters, many times with their own money, to put new bathrooms in, to put new kitchens in. Because what was there was just, it was deplorable. You wouldn't put anybody in there. And I say to the people who have the but statements, I, I understand, people have their concerns, people have their reasons for not wanting to do it. But on the other hand, how many times do we keep putting this off? Because every time we put it off, they deteriorate a little bit more, day by day, they're deteriorating. And I say to these people, would you want to work in a building that had mold and asbestos and, would you want to work under those conditions? Oh, no, I wouldn't want to work. But you're asking the firefighters to do that on, on a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week basis. My concern is this, those stations are getting to the point, and I've said this to people, that they're going to, at some point, they're going to get condemned. Somebody's going to come in and look at those buildings and say, we can't have people living in these buildings anymore. They are sick buildings. You hear about it at schools all the time, they close schools because it's a sick school, they can't put the kids in there. We're at the same point with the fire stations. And if it, this, this does not get done, it does not pass, and I couldn't give you a timeframe, in the relatively near future, I would guess, that's what's going to happen. Somebody's going to come in, the health, the state health department, or somebody, OSHA, somebody, because we are now in OSHA state when it comes to the fire department, somebody's going to come in and say, that's it, close the doors, you can't put people in these buildings, they're too sick to put people in. Now what does the town do? What do you do with your fire department if that happens? Nobody has an answer for that one. It's, it's the but, 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 but. Well, like, the but, but, but is nice, and I understand you have your reasons, but you have to look at reality. And the reality is, that's what's going to happen to these buildings. Because in the time, since I've been on, the deterioration from the time I got appointed, which was far too long ago now when I think about it, till today, is significant. And I mean significant deteriorations in those, in those stations. That's my editorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment in the room?
Yes.
And I'll just...
Council President.
Piggyback on Larry, we'll piggyback on Scott. And we talk about the but, right? The but. In the last 23 years we've built, the town has had four debt exclusions, right? We started with Fort Banks School, and then the A.T.C., then the Middle High School, then Millerfield. Every one of them has buts, right? Fort Banks, is that the best place for a school? We've got traffic, we got this, we got that. But, 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 but the town's supported it because it was the right time, we needed the building, and it's worked out fine. Have there been issues? There's issues with everything, but it's worked out fine. The A.T.C., the buts were there, the buts there were, tearing down the Willis School? We loved that school. It's been here for 75 years. We love that school. We don't want to tear it down. We got the pit, we got the Willis, but you know what? Same thing. We, we supported it because it was the right thing to do, and we have a beautiful school there, and it's working out great. And then the middle high school came, and that was supposed to be just a high school project, and then we said, oh, maybe we could piggyback that and do a middle high school. And to me, is that, you know, if I was picking, I, I could make an issue but there. Do you want 12-year-olds, what 18-year-olds in school? But, you know, we did it in a way that they're really closed off, they're not in the same positions at all. And it was a great building, and it worked out really well, but there were buts there. And then even Millerfield. I mean, that's an iconic place in Winthrop. Everybody loves Millerfield. But there were issues there with the soil, and do we really want to spend 40% of the budget in putting in lightweight fill so we can make it so it won't sink? And is there another location? Could we do something? But you know what? No, we liked the location, we did it there. We used the $3.5 million of a $10 million budget to put in lightweight fill, to bring that field up level with the street. And now we have a beautiful facility, a recreational facility for the kids in the town. We've gone to the taxpayers four times in 24 years. They were all worthy projects, but they all had questions, and the town supported them because it was the right thing to do. And this project Larry was just talking about, in 1997, there was a proposed project for a firehouse for $3.5 million. And now it's 30 to 40 million, and next year it will be 36 to 48, and then the year after that, it will be 40 to 50. It's only going up, there is no question about the need. I hope we could edit some of Larry's comments out so nobody realizes that we're out of compliance as much as we are. But, you know, that, that is, that's just something that we worry about day in and day out. Because going back to one of the comments that Kathleen made earlier on maintenance, on being proactive rather than reactive, I'd rather be, I think we're trying to be proactive here instead of reactive when we have to do something. You never want to do it because you have to do it, you want to do it because it's the right thing to do, and you're trying to be proactive with it. So it is really encouraging, though, to see more faces in the room. And I think Mr. Greenfield, Greenfield made a comment about, you know, about the lack of support coming to meetings. And, and I'd like to think it's that this committee has really done a great job in trying to educate the public, and I'm hoping that they have seen what we've been saying, or heard what we've been saying, and understand that they've seen the videos of the current stations. And I'm hoping that it is just the education process is there and they understand the need. need. But this is, it's great tonight to see over, you know, it's not a lot, but to see over a dozen people here, and I'm sure the countless thousands on C A T. But I just thank you all for coming and for having really good questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
In a nutshell what they said, I'm the younger, older chief. But the point is that you don't have to hear about our buildings anymore, but if you listen and you believe in sea level rise, and you believe that the weather patterns change, all the beautiful buildings are closed on those days. The only two buildings that are open are three buildings at Public Works, a fire police and Public Works. D P W Public Works has a new building, a newer building, but when it's either zero and snowing or blowing or pouring, the two oldest buildings with the original roofs and everything else are the buildings that are open. One of the buildings, if you believe in sea level rise, is in a flood zone, and two-thirds of our department, both apparatus and manpower-wise, are in that building. So if, nothing else, if it's just deterioration, that's bad enough, but on the same hand, the weather's changing now, the weather is also a huge problem trying to maintain those two buildings, never mind operate emergency services out of them. So there's an awful lot of factors on their back, and we hope we continue to have a few coffee hours. Scott, tonight we should give you an award, you got 100% attendance. You're the one guy that's been here, perfect attendance, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate everyone else, that's all I have.
Any other comment in the room? Yes, ma'am?
Carol Meach, Precinct 2, and on Saturday, four of us had townie coffee down at Adriana's, and just a few people kind of just showed up and sat around. Exactly what you spoke about, we were talking about how the buildings are condemned and how we have to do something, and what do we do next, and, you know, it's interesting that, you know, I think the people outside of this meeting are also starting to have those conversations. I hope it's more than just, you know, a few of us sitting around having coffee, I hope it's all around town, but just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room like to be heard? Here, is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
No one on Zoom. Last call. All right, we'll close the public hearing and just give you a couple of updates. On Saturday, October 21st, from 9:00 to 12:00, we'll have a second round of open houses in both fire stations. Pass the information around, we'll have some electronic signboards at the entrance to town, they'll be out a couple of days early to let people know. Please come by, if you have friends or neighbors or whoever who have some questions, tell them to come by, please ask them to visit the website, winthropfirestation.com. We'd love to have some more interaction with some of these coffee hours that we have, the more information we can get out, the better. Please, if you know of anybody who would like us to come, the members, a few of us, we'll get together and we'll visit, we'll come to you and answer questions, we'll stay as long as you need. Is there anything else from anybody on the committee? All right, with that being said, our next meeting will be October 23rd. It will be here again, it will be another public hearing, October 23rd, the open houses again, or October 21st. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So me?
Second.
Motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Meeting is adjourned.